Good evening and thank you for joining us. My name is Kathy Aylers and today is Tuesday, May 2nd. It being 6:03, we will open the meeting for the Finance Subcommittee. We're gathered here in the George Ram Little Theater at Brockton High School and I'll now establish a quorum with a roll call. Ms. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Homer?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
And I'm here as the Vice Chair Kathy Aylers as well. So, the one and only thing that's on the agenda for the Finance Committee is of course the fiscal year '24 budget. And so along with us tonight is Aldo Petronio that will be able to answer questions and go through some updates from our last meeting that we had last week. And I'm sure we'll have plenty of questions, but the floor is yours, Mr. Petronio.
Thank you. Thank you. Glad to be here again. I know that over the past week or so, I've had a lot of calls, and I think a lot of you've had calls asking the question of, is there a way to avert layoffs? Is there a way to save positions and whatnot? And it's not so much laying off because we don't have the money. It's more of the fact that our enrollment is reducing. And it's not reducing by a little bit. We're probably the second highest in the state. I think Boston lost about 600 students and we lost almost 400 students in the course of one year. So it's because of that, as you reduce your number of students, you have to reduce your staff. There's, you know, there's no way to offset that by just saying, well, we'll cut out paper. No more paper this year. That's not going to take care of our problem. So it's an unfortunate fact that we had many years where the district was growing in enrollment. Back in the early 2000s, we kept seeing ourselves grow all up to 17,500 students at one point. But now we're back down to 15,000 and a couple hundred students. And I think we're continually seeing it. Part of that is the fact that not as many are arriving here currently. And also the fact that the real estate values in Brockton have gone up so much that a two-family apartment is about $2,500 a month. So we're losing a lot of families going to Fall River, New Bedford, area south of here, Taunton even. So, you know, that combined with the facts that during the pandemic, many families went either to private schools or the Catholic schools or the charter schools, we lost some enrollment there also. So that, until that turns around, we're in that predicament. And from what we've received from some agencies, they don't see statewide, or even nationwide, they don't see enrollment growing over the next few years. So we really have to prepare for that. And this is the way we do is by, again, downsizing our overall employee base for the city. So even though we would, like I said, cut all the paper out that we had, we can't really use that to put more bodies back because we can't sustain those positions in the budget.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Isn't, and I just want to make sure because I did go through the packet, just to, I can see where, you know, instructional supplies, we have not really put anything in the budget for that. We're flat year over year, so I can appreciate us being judicious in other areas. But one of the things I wanted to ask is, there's a difference between restricted and unrestricted funds, correct?
Correct.
So that if we save, so even if like we were able to carve out a million dollars, we, my, from looking at the rules and regulations, we can't just apply that to personnel, correct? Like, how does that work? So say we found a pot of gold and a million dollars in the budget we were able to carve out, how, can we just apply that to personnel? I think there's restrictions on that, isn't there?
Well, the restrictions we have right now is net school spending and non-net school spending. So any money that we save in bus drivers or busing or transportation costs, we can't then shift over to the education costs.
Okay.
We have to keep those separate. As far as within the education budget, the School Committee has the ability to move funds however they want. But when you say restricted funds, we're restricted as far as we have to pay our special ed bills. We have to pay electricity, gas, you know, all those other utilities. And then you restrict it in the fact that you've got collective bargaining agreements with each union. So you can't say, you know what, we're not going to give the 2% raise this year that we negotiated. That's going to happen. So the only other way you can adjust your budget, again, is by either reducing costs or reduce, well, reducing costs in maintenance and goods, reducing costs in personnel.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted, because that's the piece that I was, I didn't know if there was a restriction on shifting monies, like if we found it, we can't put it towards, directly towards personnel anyway.
You, with all the various grants that we have?
Yep.
IDEA, which is a SPED grant, all the title grants, that ones, those are all restricted funds.
Okay.
So you can't basically get rid of three Title I teachers and shift that money to anywhere else. That money's restricted on what it's for. It has to be used on that. So the term that's used a lot is supplanting.
Yep.
You can't take that grant money and use it to supplant and cover your regular budget items. It has to be spent where it is. So that's a lot of restrictions there.
Okay.
Same thing. Food service money, restricted. Can't be used for anything but food service.
And so I hate to get right into the questions, but the other question I had is, we've been going down for enrollment, and I understand that this is an exercise in us realigning enrollment with what staffing is. But at the same time, if we have consistently been going down year over year, my concern is, you know, we're saying, okay, we're going to right-size the budget this year. We're going to balance it, if you will.
Yes.
And then with SOA monies, it's going to carry us through the next five years. Is that, but if we lose another 300 to 500 students, how do we know that we're not going to be right back here again, I guess is my question.
Well, it's a very good question. If we lose another 300 or 400 students, we could be back here again. Because again, you've got to balance your staffing levels with your students. We took a big hit during the pandemic. We took a big hit now, but we're hoping that it slows down. We'll probably lose a little more, but we're hoping that it slows down. Because at some point, when you've lost too many students or too many families, you now have apartments sitting vacant in Brockton. Landlords are going to have to drop their rents to fill those apartments. So there's some level where they'll drop them and families will start moving back. So, again, I-
Which is true, but I'm just concerned about how long that turnaround will take. That's all. Just throwing it out there.
In all my years working with the prior Chief Financial Officer, Jay Condon, he was a Navy man, he used to use the example of, it takes three to four miles to turn an aircraft carrier around in the ocean and go back the other way. So it's not going to turn on a dime.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Just, I kind of started the questions, sorry. Does anybody else have questions so far? Okay, if you want to-
So in the first couple of pages of the book, we went over-
Oh, sorry, Mr. Sullivan?
Just one, Aldo. Chris was talking last week about the Senate hasn't come up with their money yet.
Correct.
Has that been settled?
No, the Senate has not. And actually, the House has. And the House actually reduced our funding. What they did was, they left Chapter 70 alone, but they increased the costs to the charter schools. So we have to give more money to the charters. So we're losing about another $700,000, I think, in that last round. I've got a strong feeling the Senate will put it back. I really hope they do. But at this point, I don't think we're going to see any real increases in our budget.
Do you have any idea when that's going to come through?
The Senate is usually middle of May.
Middle of May. Thank you.
Do we know why they increased the charter?
We don't know why.
We don't know why?
They just, when they settled their budget, they, you know, they shift their funds around and we ended up-
But they increased them and decreased us?
Well, our Chapter 70 was left alone, but then they increased the amount of money the charters would get. So that gets hit against our Chapter 70. So we didn't lose any Chapter 70, but we'd have to pay more out to the charters.
Thank you.
That's what they did. Like I said, the, they're not pages one and two, but the second and, the first and second pages in the book, if you go to the second page, that's our Chapter 70 and our costs. As you can see, what we just talked about there, in the red down below, charter school sending tuition. So under the FY '24 Governor column, right in the middle of the page pretty much, it was $28,687. Under the House, it went to $29,807. That increase overall for us is 4.6 million for the year, but it's actually about a $700,000 increase from the House to the Governor. And we don't usually see that. So that's where we're taking a big hit. There's a small increase at the very top, charter school tuition reimbursement. This is the money we get back on that formula. So we picked up about $400,000 there, but we lost about a million down below. So the net was around, it was around 700 something when I calculated it. So overall, hoping that the, you know, the House does, I mean, the Senate does a better job. And then there's also, at the very end, there's the Conference Committee. That's where everything's hashed out. That's, gives our House of Representatives a chance to do something and fight back for us and hopefully get us back some funding. So anyways, overall, we gained about $13 million in additional funds. If we hadn't lost those students, that would have been around $20 million or $21 million, if we hadn't lost those 256 students. And overall, our salary increases this year are about $21 million in those categories. So that would have been a big help. And like we said last week, our low-income decimal that we receive for low-income students, if we had had just a few more, we would have picked up another $6 million there. Would have changed the whole picture. So, but we have no control over that. And as we're told, the formula's the formula and however the math works out, it works out. So we went through the budget and as the executive team of the Cabinet, and we started making some preliminary cuts.
So I can go page by page with you and then give you where we see the cuts. And then obviously, it's your decision where to put that money. But, and again, obviously, you've been through it as well, so I'll just tell you what we've done and then we can go from there. So, so page one. So right now, we have the Edison Academy, 594,499. That's, Edison Academy only has one full-time staff member and that's the principal. The rest is filled with teachers who actually get paid extra to teach classes. They're middle school teachers, they're high school teachers. We would like to use that to finally, after years, and Kim Gibson and the BEA have been asking, like, Mike, when are we going to finally put full-time people at Edison? Because it is a Chapter 70 school. Desi will be reviewing that probably next year. And it is, time has come to put full-time staff at the Edison. So by switching that money back into personnel, you would be able to save at this point. Again, this has to be negotiated with the BEA, but this is discussions Kim had before me with Kathy Smith and they've continued. That would save, right now, seven positions by making staff at Edison. And obviously, people would have to apply for them, but we would be obviously adding seven positions back, at least right now. So that's, that's one spot on page one.
So can I ask you, so those seven positions, would they be, we're not, we wouldn't necessarily be adding them, we would be shifting other people from-
Correct. You would see seven less slips.
Okay. Gotcha. That's what I wanted to just double check.
Because you would be transferring what we pay now in part-time salary-
Okay.
-to full-time salary.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
So then if you go to, and I'm going to the pages where if you see the other things that we, like that stuff that's fixed that you really can't touch, I mean, you can touch it, but like page two, for an example, that's additional personnel throughout the school year. That's when there is added for one-to-one pairs, an extra teacher for special ed, depending on what, you know, what's the need of the district. Sometimes it's ESL. Usually it's, you know, students with disability, teachers with students with disabilities where, you know, you get the class size getting too big and you can't legally have it that size, so you have to kind of reduce it. So that's like a contingency for additional personnel for next year. As you see, it's $1 million on page two. I left that alone. Summer employment is pretty much everything that we've, you know, that's in here, that summer employment mostly. This is outside of community schools. Community schools is funds itself. That does not come out of Chapter 70 money. But you look at the programs, these are required programs with students with disabilities that require summer school, extended school year. We have an elementary program, a pre-K program, middle school program, and we also have a high school program, and that's in the students with the IEPs. You see the money for parent info, that's registering students all year long. So these are just costs that are, in the Edison Summer Academy, that's the summer school for Edison, and we have the graduation. We usually do that in middle of July, end of July. So this page I did not touch, or we did not touch. Next is substitute teachers. I mean, this is a conversation, right now I didn't cut anything, but this is a conversation we could have further about substitute teachers. As you can see, there's classroom substitute teachers, which we did reduce by about $300,000. Then you have your long-term substitutes, permanent substitutes, and your building substitutes. So again, this is something we can look at.
Right. We had reduced the classroom substitutes because we had added more building substitutes. We found that the certain buildings that had the high absenteeism, we put a permanent sub in there, so they had them there every day.
But again, sometimes they're very hard to find. So we can, that's something we should discuss further.
So they could be off some?
They could be. Then if you look at part-time employment on 5A, what we identify as the school Microsoft 365 stipends, which I don't, we, I have to work with Kim on that and where that is, how much of it are we spending? Do we still use it? So that $78,750 is also on the table, but again, I have to talk with Kim about that. Another thing we have to work with Kim is the morning and afternoon school bus coverage, number 16. That's a lot of money for people to cover in the morning and afternoon, especially elementary and middle schools. That was something that was put in because of issues that have happened before or after school. When kids get there early or after school, they're hanging around the schoolyards and something happens and there's no adult there. We had a situation about eight years ago that was not pretty. And so we added this. But again, that's something that we can, again, has to be bargained with the BEA about, you know, is there a way we can maybe structure some things a little differently to maybe save a couple of spots Home teaching, obviously, and ABA services, that's special education down below. So there's nothing that we touched there. Part-time employment, this superintendent proficiency leadership team of $300,000, that, I don't know why that's there, but that can be totally cut.
I think we're going to-
We thought maybe it would be grant-funded, but it's-
We're going to shift it to grant-funded.
Yeah, but it's, it's not going to be grant-funded. So we can, that you can take I'm sorry, I should be telling you the number. Number's two on page 5B says the superintendent proficiency leadership teams. It's $300,000, but Desi will, like this, there's those teams at each school that are working, that's going to be grant-funded by Desi. So that $300,000 you can take back because I'm not requesting that. The rest of this is all pretty much programs, summer guidance councils, that's contractual, that's needed for, again, these are after-school coverage, Saturday intervention programs, you know, parents' nights when you have a permanent sub filling in, or they need translators. This is where that money comes from to make sure that the permanent sub, who's not a member of the BEA, the BEA members are actually required to be at parents' nights, but permanent subs are not. So you have to actually pay them hourly to come in. And also for translators as well. So that's where we take that money from. And then you see, you know, there's a bunch of money for, I didn't do any other cuts here.
Okay.
Or we didn't. Six is all the intermural program, which we, obviously is a program, so we have no cuts there. No recommended cuts. Go ahead. Bat?
Yeah, I'm behind the number 11. We have, you know, a lot of students, they're all getting sent to Phoenix.
No, we were, because we were at Fenway Park.
Oh, sorry. That's right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. No, that's all right. Again, intermurals is something we do at every level. That's obviously used. It's a program. And you see the increase there. It's because the hourly rate goes up with the collective bargaining agreement. Then you have all your extracurricular activities at middle schools and Brockton High, which are all the clubs, the bands, chorus, academic, all the advisors for senior and junior class. The middle schools get $10,000 each to decide how they want to spend that money on different clubs they do each year. Sometimes those change. So we pretty much left that alone. Continue with more extracurricular activities easier at the high school. We still, this is a work in progress still with, you know, when we meet about the BA contract, is some of these are outdated and have been shifted to other clubs that happen. So Kim and I always talk about that. The money's usually always used. It's just that, you know, some things are listed here, like we've cleaned up before. There was, I mean, I think the film strip club was in, still, still in the book. And there was stuff that's been outdated for a long time, but they've been updated with the sign of the times, would actually kids spend time on. So those are more extracurricular. That's 7B. 7C, same thing, extracurricular activities. These are all tied to Brockton High School. Athletics is next. That's everything we do with athletics from middle school to high school. And you see the cost of everything there as far as what's paid for for athletics. That goes from 1.1 million to 1.188 million. Again, that's, you know, all the coaches stipends go up and some of the costs of things go up as well. So next, same thing. This is professional curriculum development. This is professional development system-wide. It's $200,000. Steering committees is zero. That's 50. And then you, ordinary maintenance, these are all for professional development curriculum projects and then some of the memberships that we have to be part of. Next is administration. Again, these are cuts that will be made when we come forward next week to vote. I will give you an amount of the cuts. You know, obviously, we don't talk about people, but I'll give you the amount of, the numbers and how many people, how many people and how much that saves. Next is your, page 11. Next is the workman's comp and unemployment on page 12. That was nothing we really could touch. We did have to add 300,000. If, obviously, if you let people go, you have to have that money in to pay the, for unemployment.
Should we go from 800 to 810?
No. 500 to 800, right Aldo?
Right now, we went to 800. And we're basically saying, once we see the pink slips and how things work out, it might have to go a little higher. But my hopes is that there are a lot of openings at other districts that people will pick up positions and we won't have to pay it, you know, for a year. We'll pay it for a few months.
This also includes your workman's comp. A lot of that comes out of, you know, custodians, paraprofessionals, MTAs, food service, administrative assistants, they get workman's comp. So that's kind of unpredictable. There, as you see on page 13, Edison Academy, that would move to a full-time administrative assistant instead of part-time. So that would save an administrative position, administrative assistant, that would be one less riff at the administrative assistance. The rest of that is all tied to their contractual obligations we have with them. Same with the paraprofessionals. You obviously see a big increase here from 10.7 million to 13.5 million. That is directly tied to obviously the fair raise they got because they had very low numbers as far as their pay. And obviously, the increase is there, but again, the bill comes due. But they rightfully got a raise that they deserved. But that's why you see the increase from 10.788 to 13.5 million. So obviously, we didn't touch that. That would be looking at positions. Same with the MTAs. That goes from 3.8 to 2.9. That again is, they're part of the bargaining unit with the pairs. So that's just a contract increase. Custodians-
The reason that went down a little is because now that they're one union, some of the MTAs have gone over to become pairs. So.
Do you see the MTAs go away and not the pairs?
A lot of the MTAs have got emergency licenses. So we've hired them as teachers. So most, and a lot of pairs as well. So we've seen, you know, more of them become, you know, teachers on emergency licenses. That's why I think you see the number drop in MTAs. Oh, your microphone's off, Kathy.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Tracy.
Just really quick, I wanted to add that Ms. Rivas Mendez joined us about 20 minutes ago, and so she's joined the group. I just figured I'd point that out.
Then you have school police. Obviously, that's all contractual. Any increase there. Attendance supervisors, that's the salaries and the increase for the salary increase. Page 19 is bilingual facilitators, and that's their contractual increase from one year to the next. Community mentors is $900,000. This is an area that we'll be recommending a cut.
And I love that.
Yeah. So there's just, we're going through the list of mentors now, and Mario and Jamie are working together on where the cuts will be there. Non-certified retirements, that's obviously contractual obligation. Same with non-certified longevity. That's all tied to contracts. Non-certified contractual buybacks, that's nothing we can touch because it's contractual. Instructional supplies by location, this is something Aldo, Chris explained last time, you know, this, there's an area you can look at in instructional supplies. That will all be, this money will be kept at Central.
We are.
Where, yes. So it'll be kept at Central.
I'm going to put a small amount in each budget for office supplies, maybe 500 or 1,000. So the school, if they need to order some office supplies, they don't have to go through us. But any larger purchases, they want to-
It'll be a form that the principal, or the department head or the administrator will have to fill out to request what they need. So obviously, principals and building leaders will be told as they, as we get to the end of the school year and they have that extra time at the end with no kids, that, you know, we really need to start to go through all our closets and things like that to see where. Absolutely. And stuff that we really figure out what's there. But that, again, that's something that we can discuss as far as the amount of money that's there. Textbooks is something we keep in. It's just a curriculum piece. Most of the stuff's gone online. You used to see that at like $2 million, but that has changed a lot because you don't see a lot of textbooks anymore. Professional books, system-wide, that's anything we try, if we have to get books or any materials tied to professional development and trainings that we're doing. That stayed the same. And then these are all utilities on 27A, which were pretty much, nothing we can really touch because it's all maintenance of everything we have as far as plumbing, burner repairs, chiller repairs, energy conservation improvements, system-wide emergency management systems, roof maintenance when there's something with the roof, and just, you know, everything that has to do with running buildings, the physical plant.
So one thing, I know that we're looking for areas to cut, but the other thing I wanted to bring up is, with utilities, is this realistic with how expensive utilities are becoming? That's the other thing is, I don't want us to balance the budget and then all of a sudden we get hit with, you know, electric or whatever.
Correct. So the city puts out a, every five to 10 years, they join the consortium of all the towns surrounding us, pretty much the South Shore. of all the towns surrounding us, pretty much the South Shore. And they go out and they get one long-term contract with a set price. So it's easier for us to balance what we're going to have. So it just changed last year. So made some adjustments for that. And at this point, really, it's more consumption than it is the cost of the electricity or the gas. But it doesn't mean that that those contracts get broken by the suppliers and say, we can't provide you anymore. That happened once many years ago. But I think we're in pretty good shape right now for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Then it's 27B. It's the same as far as water, telephone, sewage. Offenders that are used for technology. 28. That's building and ground system wide maintenance of all our equipment that we use. Obviously, to do all the work we need to do in schools, not only in schools, on the grounds and anything to do with when we, cleaning schools, snow blowers. And if you see at the bottom of equipment number nine and 10, radios and phones, that's basically to keep maintaining and make sure we have enough radios for safety. And then safety, security, you see 300,000. That's for additional cameras in buildings that currently don't have enough to add because we finally were able to get the new server to add, I think, up to 600 cameras that has been installed and will now be installing and running the cable for surveillance cameras that are in the areas that we need to put them in. So that's where you see that money. Printing is pretty much set. It's actually a lot cheaper than it used to be, but there are obviously some things that were required to print and have. So I didn't, we didn't put anything here. So contract services. There are a few things here. If you go down to number three, the Bridgewater State, that's the jet program. That's about building diversity and continuing to allow, to help EDI and HR work on. I don't know how many people will be hiring, but it at least is helping with any of our MTAs or paras who have emergency license. Well, you know, there's a lot of people there of color that we were able to hire that were our people, people from Brockton and work in the district. It's staying in there to make sure we help them get certified. This, number 12 needs to be, this is Higgins. It says recruiting and hiring. That's a mistake. It's actually, that's the ID program that prints all the IDs for all the high school students and all the all the staff. And 28, the Rennie Center. That's now, that's grant funded. So that can come out, that 10,000.
Number 18, Mike, on that?
What?
Number 18? No, on the page.
Yeah, Mass Insight. That was saved. That's a grant, right? That can be taken out. That's going to be grant funded.
Grant funded, yeah.
Mass Insight. That 20,000 can be, oh. 30B, number 33. This person's still in, but he hasn't been with us in a while. So that 10,000 on number 33, the labor consultant, that can come out. Texter tip, which I believe we can take out because we're going to be talking about another system tonight. That's 10,000. Number 42, the MD, Jeff Turley, contracted service can be cut down from 90 to 40. So that's 50,000 back. Student furniture from, you can cut from, my recommendation is cut from, basically cut from 250 to 100,000. That's 150,000. And then the number 46, it's the student mentor services can be, you can save 125,000 there. That's the chapter 222 program. We'll be doing something different with that. So that's 150,000 that you can take from there. And then 30C. District review consultants, 150,000. That can be taken back as well and saved. Because our district review is, any consultant that's working with that is now funded by Desi. That's Chris.
Oh, gotcha.
Chris Mayer. And so they fund him. And then the rest of it, we're just going to remove because we are in such a good place.
Yep.
With Desi and the district review that we don't need extra people to help anymore. So King and Marini, who ran a PD for assistant principals, 28,000. That can be removed. Brainware Safari is a special education curriculum. It's 145. You can take out the 45. We only need 100 for that. Student datebooks, these are the old datebooks for agendas. We don't use those anymore because students have laptops. So that 3,500 can be taken out.
Where is that?
That's P, that's number 64, student datebooks.
Oh, okay.
It's only at one school and now everything's switched over to the students' laptop. They keep their calendar on their laptop and their schedule. 66 is a summer program. If it's going to be funded, it will be grant funded. So that can come out of local, which is 65,000.
Nice. Okay.
Then digital theater, that's not needed, 8,500. That can be saved.
Also, number 55 on that page.
I missed another one?
Very top.
Oh, the Gilmore, I missed that one. Gilmore after-school program, which is 30,000. That existed and was put in a few years back. That can be taken out. That's not used anymore.
Okay.
Sure. Yep, go ahead.
Page, whoa. Page 30C, number 65. And then on page 38, it's the number three. You talked about the jet and diversification program. There's two budgets for it, the 28,000 and the 75,000. What's the difference between both of them?
This one is, the other one is for people that have emergency licenses. This one is recruiting more paras who have, are not in that position yet, that are working towards his bachelor's. This helps them basically with MTEls. But not just paras. It could be, you know, we've had custodians become teachers and it's any non-certified person that works in the school district that's looking to become a teacher. We don't pay for courses or things, but we do help them with MTEL prep courses. And, you know, just, you know, helping them get ready to get prepared for the MTEL and get certified.
Okay. Thank you.
It was something, again, we put, you know, again, helped try to diversify the staff.
Yeah.
So the first one you saw was directly related to emergency licensed people. And then this one is related to the people that do not have an emergency license, but want to work towards becoming teachers. These programs, 31, as you can see, I'll take you through these. Lease at Center Street right now, which is at 661 Center, 300,000. We'll be vacating that building. So that is now zero. The Mass Assote Grainhauer Association is at the building at the fairgrounds. It's the promise school. We'll keep that building. Hawkeye Fence is 91 Foster Street. That's our only active warehouse where we get all our deliveries for everything. That's about $4 a square foot. We pay for that. It's, you know, it's been our warehouse and we've, we've worked with the city to try to look for a bigger warehouse and more active. I know Ms. Azak has talked about this for a while and we will have to continue to do that with the city side to see if we can secure a warehouse that's a little bit bigger. And again, this is, this is usually not used for a lot of storage. It's used for more, that's the active warehouses. It comes in, we try to get it out. And plus, if you know Ken, he doesn't like to keep things in the warehouse much. So when it gets delivered, it needs to, you know, it's the paper, it's the toilet paper, it's everything that gets delivered day to day that comes in, out and out. So that's where we take all the 18-wheelers that come in. Wait is the bank. It's short money, but that building does not serve a purpose anymore. So that is going away. Pitney Bowes is the postage machine that we do all our postures at Central. Lobby Guard is the system people sign in for at Brockton High School. And then the Westgate Drive, we are, we are recommending keeping. Then we talked about, this is a decision for the committee to obviously discuss further, that this doesn't have to be cut now. The legal services and where we want to go with that. But there you see 275 and 80,000. The 275. This number two, that's not the same firm, even though it's listed the same. That's the firm, I think La Mer is the name in there. There's a couple of Murphys in there too, but basically, they do all the special ed, special needs, discipline, chapter 222, issues when there's apparent challenges in IEP. That has to be done with a different law firm. And then you know that the 275 is Peter Mello, Sarah Spada for Kevin Bresner. Basically, recruitment expenses, we cut 20,000 from there?
No, we cut it down to 10,000.
10, I'm sorry. Keep 10. Thank you, Aldo. My eyes are gone. So you can, that's 80,000. I didn't have anything else on that page. 32A. 32B. This is operational expenses that we pretty much kept in. Aldo, can you explain number one?
Well, the operational expenses is what I give to basically the deputy superintendent of teaching and learning. So that's to cover any initiatives, any expenses they're going to have, whether it's stuff they want to do with the staff, with the students. So we've always just kept that, it's always been just a general label. But it's basically the deputy superintendent's budget.
Physed has to do stuff with equipment. I mean.
Yes, all the, all the new equipment we have and the gymnasiums need to be inspected every year.
And Aldo, I know Mr. Rodriguez said this, number one, under BHS, is that the automotive, although that's the automotive shop?
Yes.
The other page, we'll come up to the page with the insurance piece. And then obviously, we still run PSATs at the high school. Where all juniors can take the PSAT. We've done that for years and we pay for that. Accreditation, I mean, that's there, but I don't think that's coming up for a couple of years. So you could actually take that 6,000.
I was just going to ask you that.
Yeah, I don't think we're.
We don't need that.
Accreditation happened in 2013, the last time they did it. So you do it every 10 years. I don't, I think it's delayed because of COVID. So it's probably not going to happen to 2024.
Okay.
That's the budget where you're saying?
You can take this 6,000. You can cut that.
You're saying FY '24 or 2000?
No, no. 24, 23, 24 years. So it'd be FY '25 that could be pushed out too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Accreditation's delayed at least a year. It was scheduled to be 2023.
And is Desi the accrediting body?
No. This is, what is it, NEASK?
Oh, Netchy.
That's a lot of fun.
Isn't it Netchy now?
Yeah. They come into the high school with a team of about 40 people.
Yep. I have one coming in April. I'm doing it right now. Gotcha.
They're not, they're, 10 years, Sharon, is it 2013 they're up? Or is it 2010 they came? Okay. So we have not been contacted. So it looks like it'll be pushed out another year. They are behind because of COVID. Page 34. That's a savings of 25,000 for evening school tuition. For Edison, number one under BHS.
You're on page what?
Number 34, way down the bottom. Number one, evening school tuition, BHS.
Sorry.
Did I jump too far?
I was on.
Oh, no. Geez, all right. I jumped too far. Someone 33.
Yes, transportation and travel.
Yeah. Superintendent Travel is 6,000. I don't go anywhere. So you can cut that. Other than sometimes the Supreme on the east side, but other than that, I don't. I don't go anywhere else.
Is the mail delivery system wide, is that a salary?
That's a private vendor.
It's a vendor. Okay.
Yes.
We looked into changing that under, I want to say we looked into that about seven years ago when they had the awful cuts and to try to maybe do a different system, but the cost of the employees was more than this with the health insurance because you'd have to dedicate at least to probably facilities people to that because of the times of the deliveries. And obviously, you have to pay them full-time. And I tried to maybe look into, we tried to look at it, maybe maybe some night custodians doing it during the day, but it just, with the times, it didn't work because of the number of deliveries. So it was cheaper to keep them.
I just have a question. So how much is that? What's the line item?
Mail delivery, number one on page 33, the second section. It goes, it's 53,000.
So I do remember that superintendent and we, yeah, I was on the committee at the time and it was probably when we were the highest. I didn't think we'd get any worse than we did, but we are pretty bad right now. So we threw around probably having maybe, for example, I'm just going to throw this out there. You have someone at Ashfield, you have Ashfield, Brookfield, Baker, Downey, East. They're all on the same side of the city. So schools take turns. Someone pick up in the morning, someone drop off in the afternoon if there's, because isn't that how it works? Someone picks up in the morning, the mail delivery, and then they go to all the schools and then they drop them off in the afternoon. I mean, there's a savings of 50 some odd thousand. We just figured if we, I do remember we talked about potentially just having the schools. I mean, they're already employees. Someone just goes right to Central in the morning, picks up the packets for the schools and delivers them on their way. Because you can go to Downey, East, Baker, Ashfield, Brookfield. And just pretty much break it, break it down or even do two schools if we had to, if we had to really cut the 50K. But I know we talked about that the last, probably about four years ago.
I think there was no savings because of the, you'd have probably four or five employees now going out doing those runs. So then there's the car, whether it's their car or our car, the travel, there's the health insurance. Because this price is probably half of what most other people bid when we put the, when we put it out as a bid.
Okay.
Then I, sorry, jumped at 34. That's number one, evening school tuition. That's, doesn't need to be there. That's now the Edison Academy. So that 25 can be saved on number one down the bottom under BHS.
Oh, gotcha.
The other, the other things up top are all.
Required.
Required per, you know, residential placement, private day placement, obviously, the vocational program. North Rock Aggie, that's students that Brockton residents that go there, early college. And, you know, this is our commitment to the early college that we started first. We used Esser money for that. Now, obviously, that's not there. So now it's, you know, our budget, that's 500,000 to keep the commitment to our students participating in early college and not having to pay on their own. So that's the early college program. Greenfield Academy, it's the virtual school. And some people ask, why can't we have those kids come here? That's a parent choice. They choose to send their students to Greenfield Academy. So that's almost just like, it's almost like a charter school. That, that's nothing, it's something we can't. We did reach out to those families last year and offer our virtual school, but some have decided to stay with Greenfield. And as you know, Independence Academy is the school for students that have dependence problems, substance abuse problems. That's a regional school that's located at the fairgrounds, but is not funded. Only thing we do is fund a couple of spots for tuition when there's a student that needs to go there. But that is a regional, I think there's three regional schools of that nature. It's funded, they're funded directly from the Mass Department of Public. of Public Health.
Okay.
But we do have to pay for the tuition for any students to go there. And page 35, this is the technology piece. As you can see, new student laptops, 2 million 57. And all the other stuff is the software we actually use. That's, I mean, student, new student laptops is something you can look at is, but Dan can come in and talk to you about. That's not a decision that needs to be made right away, but Dan can come in and give you an update on why he feels we need $2 million in that area.
I kind of feel like, we had a conversation about this last week in terms of technology. I just, I feel like with the direction that we're going, we should be keeping the technology if possible. I mean, that's just me. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I feel like the technology, getting technology into our students' hands is really important.
So then you have page 36. That's just facility maintenance for things that happen every year that we have to make sure we have repairs for. We did put more money into parking lots because, as you can see, there's been more and more issues with parking lots that we need to fix. And then other things that come up. Contingency, this is unknown. We don't know what's going to happen. It went from 1.1 to 1.2. That's kept in because of Aldo. We keep it in there just in case.
Well, it's less than one-half percent of the entire, less than one-half of 1% of the entire budget. Industry standard is anywhere from 2% to 3%, but we've never been able to fund it at that amount. But this will cover anything from special ed students moving in that have to go out of district, to a boiler breaking, to just any unknown costs that we could have.
So then page 38, that's the travel outside of state, Decker. Contractual agreements with the BEA, 15,000. Administration, 4,000. That's one we could look at too, administration going out of state.
Okay.
And then non-net school spending, as you can see, there's the money for what we need to run. There will be cuts here.
Mm-hmm.
Again, that's, that's related to personnel. So we'll obviously discuss those next week, what we recommend for cuts. And here's all the ordinary maintenance for transportation. This brings me to the end.
Yes, so we are at the end and I'm also keeping an eye on time, but I would like to give everybody an opportunity if they have any questions. I feel like we...
And we also have a big chunk in the regular budget. We can, I can give an introduction during the, during the school committee meeting because this is a big budget. I made a big agenda item and then I'll give a, we can give a recap of what we presented and...
Sounds great.
We can actually talk, you know, just to be a carryover, obviously.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions now while we're on this topic before we close that you want to have addressed? Because I know I've seen questions come through from myself, from, I know Mr. Homer, you had some questions. I know Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Azak, that everybody's just taking this very seriously, which I think we can all appreciate. So does anybody have anything they want to say right now before we close out the meeting? Ms. Rivas-Mendez?
Yeah, I want to, I know like last week we talked a lot about the problem being the low enrollment and just having a lot of staff like that ratio. I'm just wondering, like, we have talked in the past about not meeting or hoping to have more of that low-income reporting of students. So I guess my big question is, how are we reporting homeless students? How, how is that happening? Are they, are they being classified as low-income students to be able to bring up that number?
They are, they are. We, the, we have a homeless, we have a Title I office that handles also the homeless. But the big homelessness jumped for us after September. So by the time October came, they weren't all, you know, there. The moratorium on evictions started in September. So people started getting evicted, you know, September, October, November, December. So that drove our number up from under 500 to about 1,000. So in the next October 1, those will all be reported, you know, that increase and we'll get a benefit from that in our overall budget. But it happened due to the fact that the moratorium was lifted because it exploded in one year. So...
So the numbers came after October 1?
Yes.
There's no way to get those numbers before so we can have it projected on our budget annually? Like...
We can predict what we end the year with. Like, we can tell you what the number is at the end of the year and then basically give it to you, the new number when we come back in September to see how many have stayed with us, to make sure, to see where the number is, which would help us predict what the number's going to be on October 1st.
Okay.
Of next year.
Correct.
So basically where that number's going to be, it's over 1,000 now. It's going to, will it stay 1,000? Will that number stay steady all the way through to October 2nd? And that's when we can count them for next fiscal year.
And would that help us with, I know we lost, we hoped to get that 6.2 million, but we didn't get it because of that.
Big time.
Be, keeping track of those numbers, would that help us for next year to be able to try and get that?
Absolutely.
Because most of them will qualify for the low income so we could get to Group 12. Not all of them do unfortunately, but...
Correct.
But...
Because it depends on how they're homeless and where they're staying.
Yeah.
So...
But that's a good point.
All right, thank you.
But what we can do is, we'll give you an update in our summer meeting, like the first meeting in July, how many homeless students finish the school year? I mean, I can give you that number at the, by the time June 19th, 16th comes, but then we can give you that number when, you know, when the summer where it is and then when we start in September where it is and then in October. So every, pretty much the first of every month, we can give you that number.
But a follow-up to Ms. Rivas-Mendez's question is, so if we find out that we have a, you know, because I know that our homeless population has risen 125%, I think from what they said at our meeting last week.
Yes.
So even if we have the right number as of September 1st, October 1st, that kicks in the following year for the six points. So it's not going to help us with this particular budget? Okay, I just want to...
Unless for some reason, the state, which we haven't seen them do, puts in kind of a pothole fund, which would be added later. But we haven't had any discussion. The big thing that the Mass Association of School Superintendents is looking for is more funding towards out-of-district costs.
Yep.
Homeless transportation costs and the cost tuition for out-of-district and also the transportation for homeless and for out-of-district placements. They're looking for an increase with that would, would benefit us.
Gotcha. Mr. Homer?
Just two things. So with the, the situation with the homeless students as well that we're talking about, I think, if I'm wrong, that most of the costs that we incur, it's transportation of the students from wherever they reside to the district. Do we have any idea of how many are placed in Brockton? Or are we, will we have an idea of where the additional 500 students are currently? Are we projecting that cost into the budget for transportation for next year? Because I know that eats up a big chunk of the budget. The second concern I'd have is, is the city doing anything to work on bringing those students, keeping those students in Brockton so that we don't lose them to other districts if they find residents outside of Brockton? We're going to lose even more students. Thanks.
So we have built into the budget from this year's expenses what we project for next year. We've been buying regular plane minivans. So with our own drivers that we will drive and pick up these students and bring them back. The cost is probably one-third of what it is to hire a private company to do it. So we're looking at that. And you're right, not all of those additional people who are homeless have moved out of the city. But all that do get homeless, we try and reach out to them to make sure they have, you know, SNAP and other, other benefits that automatically puts them on the rolls for us for, for the low-income number in our budget. And as far as if they stay in the city they're in, that's kind of up to them. We, we would like them back, but the problem is...
That's a good point.
The rents here are a problem.
Maybe we can have that discussion with the mayor to see what actually the city has for options as far as the Main Spring House, places that where they would be able to stay. I mean, unfortunately homeless, but could, could they be placed in a shelter in Brockton? I know that it's kind of changed a bit. Oh, Mayor's here, thank you. I know that some of the hotels that used to...
Yeah, we actually have quite a few students in the Brockton Public Schools that are residents of Main Spring, Father Bill's Main Spring. You know, it's, it's private, so we won't share those numbers, but they are residents of Main Spring. And we're also working with our nonprofit partners in terms of financial endeavors. We've advocated on Beacon Hill as well to try to extend the moratorium. Unfortunately, it failed. But I know Lieutenant Governor is going to be here tomorrow, Kim Driscoll, for groundbreaking of the new Father Bill's Main Spring up on Manly Street. And I'll talk to her again. She's a former mayor. We have a duty for those that live in Brockton, if they have a home and a roof over their heads or if they're homeless. And we need to continue to do that. The BRA has given funding, grant funding to help some folks as well. But when they cease doing the federal rental assistance and when they cease to keep the moratorium in place, it was detrimental to every gateway in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we close out? Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Aldo, with all the cuts that's stated today, where does that 151 number for certified drop down to? Or is it still too early to project?
Well, it's still too early to project, but basically we're looking at about seven positions that we could put back. So that 151 would drop down to, you know, 143, 144. But again, with that, we also have to look at, there are, there are BEA members who are out on leave, whether it's a one-year leave or a two-year leave or even a six-month leave. They have rights to come back. So that could bump up, that will bump up the number of pink slips that are actually given out because we have to make a spot for them to come back in. That, that happens every time we go through these layoffs. So this week we'll work on that. And by the time we come next week, we'll have that number.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Homer?
Just one more point. And I'm just thinking about when we, when we have our discussion next week in terms of if we can take a look at the class ratios and the student-teacher ratios as well. Because I know making cuts, we, we don't want to see it mean that classroom sizes are going to grow exponentially or that we're going to be packing classrooms like 31 to 1 or something like that where we know that's going to be detrimental to the students. I think the same thing with like teacher-assistant positions in classrooms and things too. If we're losing that extra layer of support, I don't know that that's going to be the best thing to help us achieve our long-term goal if the students need the support in the classroom. So just hoping we can have an idea of what the ratio is now, what we're looking at with the impact of any cuts and if we're going to be...
We'll actually put it in the Friday packet. So Karen will do that for elementary and Michelle will do that for high school and middle school. And we'll have it in Friday's packet. So you'll have it before so we can discuss it Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Okay, in the interest of time in the regular school committee meeting, you know, scheduled for 7 o'clock, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And, okay, so Ms. Sullivan, properly seconded by Ms. Azak, can I get a show of hands? All right. Motion, adjourn.